Start off with introductions for our guests, right?
No, but we have to get the recording.
Sure.
It's on.
It is on?
It's on.
It's on?
Yes, yes, welcome. My name is David Edson. And what's your name?
I'm Chris Shaheen.
Chris?
Shaheen.
Shaheen?
Shaheen.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to have you here. I'm not sure if you have something specific for the planning board. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do that, I guess.
Yeah.
Let's go around and just introduce ourselves.
Yeah, good idea. Okay, yes.
How are we done?
Chris Shaheen, the town planner in Jericho since October.
Bart Chastain.
Jen Doe.
And Ross.
To be fair.
Yes.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, really. Everybody's curious about this.
Oh, yeah? I hope I don't disappoint them.
So I don't have a copy of the agenda, but I think the first order of business is public comment. But there is no public, so I'm going to go right into Chris, I expect.
Yeah, also you can ask for changes to the agenda, but I don't have any.
No changes?
No.
Okay. So we go on to you, Chris.
Is it me? Is it my time? I brought the handouts of my presentation here, so you can... So like I said, my name's Chris Shaheen. I've only been here, I guess, getting on nine months now. I had been working in the DC office of planning for over 20 years, doing mostly public space work, but also like design review and zoning, some zoning work. But since I've been here in Jericho, I've been working with their planning commission on some zoning amendments to our village centers, or three village centers. But then I've also gotten pulled into some of the wastewater work that was going on before I got here. And that's where I'm going to share some information with you tonight on what we have been doing looking at our wastewater system. And I can walk through that, and we can answer questions at the end, too. I don't know if you want to... Are you going to pull it up on the screen, or?
I'll try.
Okay. Is there anyone on, or is it just us here?
I think it's just us. There's one other person on.
Okay. Well, everyone must have turned to page two.
Zach, there's a couple chairs back there.
Yeah.
Pull up a chair from behind you. Yeah. I just want to introduce yourself because the rest of us have to.
Hi, Zach Drova. I am new to Underhill, but moved here in August of last year. Nice to meet you, Chris.
Well, great, I've only been here since October, so.
Oh, great.
Have any of you been following what we've been doing in Jericho with wastewater?
Vaguely know what's going on.
Vaguely?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, maybe I can fill in some holes if there are any. So back in 2022, we hired the Boys and King to do a feasibility study for us. And that is looking at our three village centers and just doing a general assessment to see what would be feasible provided wastewater. The work was being funded through the state's Clean Water State Revolving Fund. That initial feasibility study was 125,000. The way the program is set up, that's... We get reimbursed for that, so it's not costing us any money to do that feasibility study. And when we look at the Riverside Village Center, we actually included a little bit looking at what... Adding some capacity to pick up anything from Underhill if Underhill wanted to tap into our system. So I could talk about that a little more later, too. So we'll go to the next slide, which is number three. So this is the boundary of the Riverside area that we've looked at. There are two lines on here that are good to know. So the dark green line, that is the designated village center, which has implications for state programs. You can see most of it's in Jericho, but some of it is in Underhill. So maybe you know the answer to this. I've been told that this is one of like two or three village designations in the state that involve two towns.
That's right.
Do you know what the other... Is it two or three, or... I mean, that's a good cock-a-doodle question.
Yeah, really. Much of it, yeah.
Okay. The thing about the way things are set up with the state is that the service area for the sewer system should be, or needs to be, within that green boundary or within a quarter mile of it. And that dotted line that's going around that green line is that quarter mile designation. Of the three village centers, Riverside has the most opportunity to capitalize on the system. It's got the 15-acre Tetra property or the Sawmill property that is part of redevelopment. Ideally, a sewer system could serve the development that's going in there. I mentioned that we had looked at some additional capacity that could potentially serve Underhill. So it's 9,000 gallons of waste a day, which would be factored in. And what that translates to, in words that I understand, are 44 residential units, basically. So not a lot, but some additional capacity. The next slide is slide number four. So we've completed our feasibility study. We've decided which of the three village centers we wanted to move forward with, which was Riverside. So the next step for us is completing what's called a preliminary engineering report, or a PER. That will be a preliminary design, and it will include an environmental report. So that drills down a little more specifically. See, I have some notes here. I can tell you exactly what that's going to include. There'll be an engineering assessment of the system. I could find that we have more or less capacity than we expected from the feasibility study, so we'll get to a little more detail. It'll determine specific service areas. So where within that green, dotted green line, we would want to be servicing. We established a task force, a wastewater task force. I think there are eight members on it. It includes members of the Select Board Planning Commission, a couple residents. They will just be advising the Select Board as we move forward with the preliminary engineering report and then throughout the project. So if we then choose to go on to the next step, which would be the design phase, and then the next step would be implementation. We have decision points we need to make at each one of those phases to see if we're going to go on to the next. And we have a lot of questions ourselves, like how much is it going to cost? The feasibility study had some very general numbers that will get more refined as we go through the process. Those are just numbers in terms of cost for implementation. It's not necessarily how much it's going to cost the town, because we don't know how we're going to be financing it yet. There were some recent proposals passed through the state in my prior... I don't know all the details, but there are different funding mechanisms out there that could help fund infrastructure for villages to get the type of development that the state is looking for to help address the housing problem. A lot of this is really being driven by the need for housing. And then on your side, there are pictures of two interns that we've had this summer from UVM, Cam and Finley. They have been awesome. They have been doing some research for us. They've been talking to other towns that have either successfully or unsuccessfully gone through the process of getting wastewater system. What is really determining whether it's successful or not is whether, when the time comes, if they go to a bond vote, the fundness, whether the bond vote passes. So there are examples of where the towns were successful in getting that local support, and it passes, and there are examples where they don't. So we wanted to learn from their experiences. They're also doing some community surveying, just to get a sense of what people know about wastewater, what their thoughts are for us. If you've been to the Jericho market or the Jericho farmers market, you might even have met them, because they were out there collecting survey information. I think we're up to, I think, maybe 100 surveys that we've collected to get some good information. So that's all really interesting stuff. And they are going to be wrapping all of their research up with a white paper, like a study of best practices and findings, not just for Jericho, but something that other municipalities could use. It's being funded through the Leahy Center for Rural Partnerships. So it's been a really great partnership for us. The next slide, number five. So I was asked to come tonight because I think there may be interest in Underhill in what we're doing. If there is interest in working with Jericho as we move forward, just some things to know is that you do have that designated village center area, so you would be eligible to have the sewer through the state programs. You could connect to Jericho's wastewater system. You could partner with us to do that. Like I said, our feasibility study did look at some potential service for the Underhill flats area. A logical first step for Underhill could be to conduct a survey and just determine what user interest there might be in that area to see if this was something they do and want to pursue. And then if Underhill did, there would just be more coordination we would need to figure out based on planning, the construction of the system, and how we would directly manage the system. But we have a long history of working together on certain things, so it'd be another way of continuing that tradition. And the last...
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Number one, the 9,000 gallons, is that per day?
I think it's annually. No, it would be for 44 houses?
Oh, it is day. It is each day. It's 9,000 gallons a week each day. Yep.
Do you have any idea what the division would be between Jericho and Underhill? How much excess capacity you would have after you got everybody in Jericho hooked up?
The way that it was looked at so far, that 9,000 gallons was specifically just for Underhill.
Oh, I see.
And you... There were 44 houses.
Forty-four units. It could be houses, duplexes, a multi-unit building. It could be a unit. Yeah. So a four apartment building with four units would be four units. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I think our system has a capacity of maybe 60,000 gallons a day. I'd have to look at the feasibility study to know specifically, but it's a lot more, yeah.
And the other question I had is, do you have a rough idea of the kind of system you're looking at to put in?
I'm not an engineer. It's... As the way I understand it, it's a municipal septic system. So it would be underground. It'd be just like...
Giant leach field?
Yes. It'd be like what you have in your backyard, only it'd be on a much bigger scale.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't have the water flow in the river, in the Brown River, to have a system that does a direct release into the river after the water's been purified, after the waste has been purified.
Okay. And it would be in the Browns River Middle School field?
So that was...
More than likely.
More than likely. So one of the things that feasibility study did was it identified all the potential areas for that. The preliminary engineering report is going to drill down to the next level and finalize, like where that would be. But the middle school is one of the sites that we've looked at. It's the largest site.
And Tetras would be responsible for a good deal of the cost probably, right? Because they want to develop that property.
Well, funding is yet to be determined, right? The first phase of Tetras development, they have designed a septic system on their property that could handle that first phase.
Oh, I see.
So I think it's really a matter of chicken and an egg. Like if we can get the system in place first in time for them to tap into that, then they wouldn't have to build their own septic field. And we'd have users built into the system right away, which would be great.
Would you... So would you say if Underhill were to get 44 units, we would always... That would... If we decide to join, we would always have that 44? And then... But everybody's not required to look up to it, is that correct?
So I think that this was just a feasibility study. So we were just looking at getting some basic numbers for us to start to figure out what we would be doing. And as part of that, we just put in 9,000 a day for Underhill to be 44 units. Whether that... Now, it's not like designated. It's really, it's just like a placeholder now to figure out... To help us figure out capacity and to leave an option open in case it was something that we wanted, that there was opportunity to partner with.
So it's way ahead of some very specific things.
Okay, yeah. I just... Okay, well, they're not... I just... Okay, get back to how it paid for. This would be a bond that would be voted for by the whole town, right? So those are getting into details that I am not an expert on. But the state has passed... I can't remember what the acronym is. You may remember what it is.
CHIPS Act.
Is it CHIPS? So it's a way of raising fees or taxes for a specific... I don't know if you know what a TIP district is, a tax increment fund. It's where like a specific area will say, okay, I'm willing to be taxed more or to pay a little more. And whatever that amount is goes into a specific fund, and that can go towards specific improvements. And what the state has done is it has set up a mechanism where towns can do that, and that additional money is specifically for infrastructure projects like wastewater, municipal water, sidewalks, road improvements. It could be anything. But it is, for us, it would be great if we were able to use that to help fund the wastewater system. There are, there's the state, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. There is some money in that that can go toward this, but it's not a lot. I think it's like 500,000, and we're looking at a couple millions of dollars for this. So it's not a drop in the bucket, but it's not a huge amount of money. I think there are, if we were to, the two towns were to work on this together, there are some cost benefits to us. I think there are certain criteria you need to qualify for, for certain assistance. And I think when we do it together, we are better at hitting some of those targets than if we just do it by ourselves.
So is the goal to be made whole at the end on the bonds? Given the grants or whatever you're getting for partial funding, the remainder of the bond that the taxpayers are paying for, would that be allocated as a hookup fee of some sort? Or that would be reimbursed or... Let's see, philosophy on that.
I'm not sure. I'm sorry, I'm not following the question. And it's probably, it's not because you asked it poorly. I just don't, I'm not a numbers person myself.
Right. Just wondering, assuming that some of it's going to be funded through grants, and then the taxpayers are going to be on the hook for the balance, how is that... Is that made up for through hookup fees?
Oh, I see. So we really just don't know answers to any of those questions yet. But hookup fees and user fees is definitely something that would go toward paying it off.
Right.
Again, I don't know the details, but I know in Westford, they actually had funding lined up to cover the entire cost with no cost to the taxpayer. But for some reason, they still needed to have a bond vote, I think, just for backup. So I don't understand, like, why they needed that. I just know that they did need it. And in that case, the bond didn't pass. And because they didn't have it, they did not move forward with the project. But my understanding was that they didn't need any of that money to actually go to construction. So I'm assuming you could vote to approve a bond, and then you never even tap into it.
What's the timeline on a project like that?
So this is sort of an incremental thing. So the only next timeline that I'm really certain of is that we are planning on having our application to the state to do our preliminary engineering report. If it's not already submitted anytime soon, and then we would be starting the preliminary engineering report in mid-August.
Do we need to be a part of that? Do we need to be... Do we need to be on that?
No, we are moving forward as a town of Jericho. But if this is something that Underhill is interested in doing, I mean, it would be a decision to make, and then we would have to figure out what the right questions are that need to be answered, yeah.
Just a quick question on the total unit count that you were talking about. I think I heard 9,000 gallons, 44 units, but the total project is closer than 70,000, is that...
It's closer. It's, I'd have to look at the feasibility study. I think it's around 60,000, and I want to say it's around 300 units, but I am not 100% sure on that.
Is the idea to connect houses that are already into the system? Or is this all new planned development?
It'd be both. So it would be to serve new construction. But then if you have an existing property with a septic field that's failing, you know, they could opt to tap into the system, which would be significantly less cost than having to build a whole new and replace a whole new septic field. I feel like a lot of my answers are, we don't know the answer to that yet. But we really don't have the answer to some of these.
You're starting discovery.
Yeah.
Well, how about the data being collected and those interns that are working on, and maybe this will come out in the white paper you mentioned, but...
Yeah.
Are, do you know any kind of info about other towns that they've talked to? And what those towns are, and what that, some of that information is?
Yeah, yeah. So they looked at Leach Field, Montgomery, something Cot, Walcott.
Walcott.
Walcott. Those are the three that I remember. Westford, Huntington, Huntington.
Okay.
They've looked at all kinds of information. So is there, when you ask if we've had any lessons learned, do you have anything specific you're interested in? I might know something.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's unique to us, as you said, with, you know, the village districts spanning two different towns. But I guess giving out what that survey information that you're collecting now and what that has looked like in those other towns so far, and what that appetite has been for citizens of those towns.
Well, there are two things. I hope I didn't mix it up. We're interviewing like community leaders from those other towns, just one from their experiences. And then we're doing surveys of residents and community leaders here in Jericho.
Okay, gotcha.
So what we have, some of the things that we've found out from the other towns, let's see. Having just a good coordinated messaging strategy, being on top of misinformation that's getting put out there. I just got a question the other day. Someone saying, oh, I just talked to someone in Shelburne or Ridgefield, and their system's $50 million. And I'm like, that doesn't sound right. So I looked it up, and there was something, I don't know if it was 26 million or 50 million, but neither of them were like comparable. One was a totally different type of system that actually, it's like an existing system where they are dumping into a water body, which is a different type of system. It's more expensive to run. And then the other one, it was a company, it was a bond to vote to improve both their municipal water and their septic system. So they, neither were comparable. So I was able, so based on like the feedback, it's like I just, I responded right away. And I'm saying, nope, that's not what's going on. This is not $50 million for us. So that's like one lesson learned that we've heard. Yeah, having strong leadership from the Select Board and all parts of government in terms of promoting this and talking about what the benefits are. And the benefits are being, not just people can tap into wastewater system, but there are health benefits, there are economic development benefits, there are tax benefits. Like one of the issues I know that we're dealing with in Jericho is that our school population is going down. And again, I don't understand all of this, but then that means that our costs are going up for our schools, and somehow that impacts our taxes. And if we get more residents and more students, then that lowers other taxes that residents have to pay. So, but how to make that into a seven-word talking point that's easily digestible, understood by people? I mean, that's a magic trick right there. So we need to figure out how to promote what we're doing in a way that's more than just, it's going to cost you X extra dollars a month.
Yeah. Yeah, communicating those benefits is important. And I think it makes sense for us to conduct a survey, as you're talking about, and describing to kind of gauge that. And, yeah, like to Zach's point, too, it's like if there's older houses in the flats where, you know, maintaining an old system is cost prohibitive. Because we've had this conversation about expanding the village boundary in Underhill. Is there really any space to allow for bigger development? And it seems to be that there's really not a lot of, practically, there's just not many lots where that could be done. So it's like, it might really be more useful to some of those existing homes versus new homes, and how many we could back in there if we decide to try to do that.
Well, we give an existing home the ability to build an ADU or turn a house into a duplex or...
Yeah.
And that sort of thing.
Yeah, it's funny how a lot of these things we've been talking about recently are pretty interconnected with ADUs and the village boundary.
How far away, I'm not educated on this, but how far away can a house be to connect into a septic system?
Oh, that's getting into engineering.
Because this is not like...
Pretty far. I think it can be really far. I guess like one of the things we were looking at for Jericho's center was building a line to tap into the Richmond septic plant, because they've got extra capacity. So that's pretty far.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I guess that was, I was curious about that. And where, because it did say that, in the feasibility study, it said municipal system serving Riverside and Underhill flats, the most cost-effective alternative. So does that mean you look at the other two village districts?
Yeah.
And it was like, these aren't really viable.
Yeah, yeah. So here, like, we looked at our three village centers, and there was a... There are a number of factors that the Boys and King looked at. And they concluded that Riverside was the best, most feasible in moving forward, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Just, I mentioned a couple readings ago that we used to work in Charlotte, and there was a small municipal wastewater treatment system just to serve the municipal complex and related businesses in the town, the West Village Center. And the leach field for that system was a half a mile away. And it was served by pub stations and some very large police mains that connected that location to where the lead was and the septic tanks were. And mostly it worked well. I will say there were times when we lost use of our toilets a ton. We're not going to talk about that.
So what is our next step? Is to go to the Select Board and ask them to apply for, to get on board for the next phase of your application?
Well, I mean, that's up for you guys to decide, right? So like, I'm just letting you know what we're doing. Well, I did talk to, so John Ashley is our main consultant with the Boys and King. And I anticipated this question. And he said like, the best thing might be to do a survey, just gauge interest. But I don't know. I guess if you would need to talk to us, if this was something you wanted to pursue to get, go ahead from your Select Board, I don't know.
I don't know. I think we could go around the table. Everybody probably has an opinion at this point, right?
We did, didn't we? I sent up a request to the Select Board and shot it down, basically.
Yeah. Because back in 2022, we were supposed to be a part of that Du-Boyd-King survey.
A letter.
And for some reason, we never were. And we all voted that we wanted to be. I mean, the board's changed since then. Do you remember that?
Very clearly, yeah.
It was like, well, I don't know what the letter was. We said we wanted to be part of it. Is that what, what was the letter?
Well, I kind of remember, but I do remember there was something about us, about Jericho, Underhill, sort of doing this together. And that, it was before I got here. There was turnover in staff. I don't know. That was two town planners ago.
Yeah.
I think it was two town administrators ago. And I don't know if something just got dropped in the shuffle. I don't know all the details.
Okay, well, anyway.
Just as a point of information, I feel like it sounds, from what you said before, maybe you...
Just as, as a point of information, I feel like, um, sounds from what you said before, maybe you can correct me if this is going too far, but the request for funding for the preliminary engineering report that's, that's in process.
That's something we're pursuing, yeah.
Pursuing that on, on their own, as far as the town of Jericho is concerned. So they don't need us for that. And, and the state will make its decision, hopefully it'll be thumbs up. And that study can then get underway, which is the nitty gritty of the design and other details that Chris was talking about before. However, um, when it gets, if that preliminary engineering report is a lot of positive outcomes, a little thumbs up for what they proposed to do, um, then it, there would be some period of time during which, you know, Underhill would be well served, I think, if we wanted to, to partner with Jericho. For, for example, these, these big clean water state revolving fund grants that could underwrite a lot of the cost of the system. I guess going in on it together with Jericho would make a much stronger application, more likely to get funded because we share the village district. And then, um, so between now and then, whatever that is, you know, would be an opportune time for us to survey town residents and, and, you know, just to develop some data. And I actually came across, um, when I was digging through some of the electronic files, I came across a list of, um, properties in, um, on the Underhill side of the, the town line, down in the village district, uh, which basically listed out who, who is, who has their own individual lot septic now, what are the permits that exist now? And this was as of three or four years ago, so it's not current information. But we could update that information, um, you know, to get some sense of who the, the base would be for current homeowners with their own individual lot septic, who would be potentially in the market to switch to a municipal system if one was available. And we could design one survey just for those folks and say, well, you know, if, if a system like this were available and the costs were between X number and Y number to hook up. And then there was like a monthly or quarterly fee in this ballpark, would you be interested in connecting to a system like this? And then a, a different survey would go out to town line and, and the questions would, would be oriented towards, so given that the town share of bonding for the, the cost of building the system would be reduced by state grants, by the, the chip program, um, and would be paid off in a different way than a general obligation bond, which most people, when they think of the town bonding, they're thinking of a general obligation bond where all taxpayers are on the hook for all the costs. And what we're talking about with this scenario is something that's very different than that. So the people wouldn't, the town would not be on the hook for a hundred percent of the cost. In fact, in, in the study that Chris shared with me earlier, the consultant proposed like a ninety percent, ten percent split of the potential cost, given the capacity.
Yeah, I recall that, right? And that was what, when we went out, that grant that you wrote.
Yeah.
Was to, with that understanding, Underhill taking on ten percent.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, the, I think it would be important to, to Chris's point before about public outreach and education and combating misinformation to, to, to really make it clear before or at the time that we send out the survey that goes out to the whole town, you know, here are the facts. Create a simple fact sheet, like here, here's what the system would cost within a range. Here's what the town sheriff would be within a range. Total cost would be reduced by the following factors. And given all that, uh, you know, do people in town in general feel like this would be a wise use of municipal resources to, to benefit not just the people who live in the set, village center, but also to enhance economic development opportunities, to create more housing opportunities and, you know, to basically create a more sanitary and ecologically sound basis for people to take care of the wastewater from their homes and businesses in the village center. So just to reiterate, the next step for, for your town is, is what again?
So preliminary engineering report or P E R.
Yeah, and that will be coming about when?
We, hopefully we'll be starting by mid-August. Yeah, one, one thing I saw in my notes, which I need, I should, need to mention. So I mentioned, we included the nine thousand gallons a day as part of the feasibility study. If Underhill did want to tap into our system, I mean, Underhill would need to do its own engineering study to figure out where it piped, where it, its pipes were, what areas it wanted to serve, then to tap into ours. So like that is not, like that, that will not be included in our, what we're going to be looking at.
So you're going to look at all of that and starting in August, so.
For Jericho, yes, yes.
And then we, we'd have to catch up with you on that somehow. Or.
As soon as, or. You would be behind, but it's like, we would just need to have a pipe you can tap into.
Yeah.
I mean, to, I think that's right. I, I'm not an engineer and that's the simple way that makes sense to me. So, yeah.
But there is maybe some utility in, or for your, the Jericho application that's going in in mid-August. If you can include on it that you consulted with Underhill and Underhill is supportive of this, perhaps?
Supportive of?
Doing the study.
For Underhill?
Yeah, or I guess for Jericho, but yeah, I'm wondering if it, like, as you were saying, like, it makes it a stronger application if you're showing that both towns are working together. But if you're going ahead with it in mid-August, like you might need a little more time to get the select board to, even if it's not, you know, obviously that survey data and that would take longer, but you could be able to include in there that like, we're exploring this with Underhill and they're pursuing.
We're continuing our discussions.
Yeah, that might help, yeah. It could be something that could be helpful.
Yeah, that's good. I can, I'll take that back.
Yeah. So you got funding from the state with the preliminary engineering?
Through the, the, the C W S R F, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund.
And you didn't have to ask the select board for any funds to do that study?
Well, the select board made the decision to apply for the funding.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, everything is coming from the select board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you need the survey data in advance as well? Did you need the survey data in advance of getting the funding?
Yeah, that's a good question. The, that was before I got here. There is survey results in the feasibility study. So I, I think we went ahead and did the feasibility study before, um, getting survey results. But those survey results helped us figure out like what the level of interest was in connecting in each of our village centers.
And there is quite a bit of interest?
Uh, I don't, I don't know what percentage to associate with quite a bit. There was, I, but I would say it was more support than not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. But did you only interview people that lived in the flats or was it town wide?
It was just people in those village areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and, and look at the, the study to verify that though. And the study, if you've looked at it, it's like not a user friendly document. It's like a really dense, there's no executive summary that just makes it easy to understand what's going on. I don't recommend getting it unless you're having trouble sleeping.
Yeah, it's over three hundred pages.
Oh, is it really?
Oh, the, the timing of that, the white paper that you mentioned?
Their last name is August fifteenth.
I figured they got to go to school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you could share that with us too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
You know, at that point, that might be a time for us to move ahead with something, once we get that information. I think it would be good for us to have our ducks in, in a row before we go to the select board.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and so I think part of that is really the, the background research, like how many properties in the center could benefit from this hookup? And then, you know, maybe do at least the first round of a survey to those property owners. And then also talk about the, the broader research we want to do with town residents as a whole and what kind of questions we want to ask. And just, just to check in with the select board at that point, saying, you know, here's what we found out so far. Here's what the, most of the members of the planning commission would like to see happen in a broad brush. But, you know, we, like you, are having an open mind about what information we get going forward about real costs and engineering and all that stuff and financing, of course. But, you know, let, let's talk about whether this is something the select board wants to pursue, or at least to entertain. Because if the select board is like, eh, nope, we don't want to do it. That's important for us to know. We don't want to waste more time and energy, you know, sort of chasing them in a rabbit hole if they're not interested.
That's what I realized about the white paper that you've done, because it's probably already interviewed a bunch of flats folks, you know? So we'll have a first. We're not, we're not, we're not taking names and addresses in front of our survey.
Perfect. Anybody shops there is going to be.
From, from Riverside of the Flats though. Well, I, I definitely know there were some, there were people from interview, uh, Underhill I got interviewed, but yeah. I will say one of the things that, that I have found interesting and challenging and frustrating is I will talk to someone who's concerned that their kids can't buy a home in Jericho because it's too expensive and there's no housing available. And then in the same conversation, how adamantly opposed to a wastewater system they are. Like not, not connecting the dots and understanding that wastewater is so important in helping us get more housing. And it's a supply and demand thing, the more housing there is, the, the costs go down. More housing there is, there's more options to buy places. So it's figuring out how to get that message through to people.
Just as an aside, so, um, I had another job that just ended recently as a contract. And we were, basically the contract was to rewrite and update the three state, state land use planning manuals that are made available to planners and zoning boards, planning commissions and D R Bs all over the state so they can understand what they need to do to stay current with state statute and permitting and master plans and the new state designation programs. Anyway, um, one of my little pieces of that project was I took on doing informant interviews of all major affordable, nonprofit affordable housing developers in the state. And I asked some questions like, what is it that's getting in the way of your building more affordable housing in this moment in Vermont? And, you know, do you have any suggestions about how to overcome those barriers? And when I summarized that for one of the publications we were updating. And one of the common themes that came up in those interviews was it's really hard to work with smaller towns and rural communities that don't have community wastewater capacity and aren't interested in developing it. Because they can't make projects, smaller projects from smaller towns pencil out without having the ability to hook up to a community wastewater system. That's a really big expense. And, you know, with affordable housing, the margins are so tight that there's no way that they can make up that cost and still have rents or purchase prices that are affordable for, for units that people can move into. So this is a real dilemma. And you have to have noticed that most of the affordable housing units that are built in Chittenden County or South Burlington, most in Burlington. And that's because they're red, they, and the new scheme, that's because they have wastewater systems to hook into. So the developer, the would be developer for the, doesn't have to cope with the additional cost of building out that capacity because it's already there. And they, they realize that a lot of towns, creating a wastewater capacity is controversial and that, as Chris points out, it's, people aren't really connecting the dots. But if, if you're trying to make it happen and you've got a great team and you've got a track record of building, multi-family units in smaller towns, uh, you know, you, you have to be realistic about what the landscape looks like and what the limiting factors are and wastewater and water capacity is a big one. And we have, fortunately, Riverside Flats, we have the Underhill Jericho Fire District that has the water supply. So really wastewater, the lack of community wastewater capacity is kind of the last nut to be cracked to make more affordable housing possible.
What do they say? You have to spend money to make money? I, I know there's an analogy there somehow, somewhere.
I have to convince people that, um, yeah, those, um, four story units that are down in Essex and elsewhere. You know, we'd like to have that right over here, but, um, that's a hard argument.
Yeah.
That's part of the problem. I think we're a little over time for this agenda.
Yeah, sorry, I, I.
That's all right.
Oh, that's really, so I very appreciate you, Chris.
That's very informative and helpful.
Oh, good.
And very good of you to come by.
Yeah, thank you for having me. And you can call me Jared if you want to.
Is it Shaheen or Sheehan?
Shaheen. It is deceptively just like it's spelled. S H A H E N. Oh, Jean Shaheen.
Like Jean Shaheen.
Yeah. I'm not related, but we do have the same last name. Great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
One last question for you. Just, you mentioned the middle school earlier and that you were getting pushback about just developing in general. Was that in association with the middle school location or just the general, the general pushback?
I think those are, well, it's not related to the middle school. And are you talking about just the, about the conversation that I had or there was?
Yes.
No, it's, it's, there are, you talk to a hundred people, you will get a hundred different opinions. So I think generally there's support, but there are people that, you know, have concerns or want a little more information and then support. But there was no correlation specifically with the middle school site? If that's what your question is.
Yeah, that was, but are you, are you looking at other locations as well or is that kind of like?
The feasibility study identified other locations. That is seemingly the most, the easiest one. It's one property owner, it's a large site. We have had initial, very initial discussions with those school districts and they're open to it. So we'll know more as we get through the preliminary, the, the P E R. Sorry, that's not a very definitive answer.
The P E R will take some months.
Yeah, I would imagine a year, nine months to a year. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a planning going forward, Larry?
Well, okay, here's something that could be an opportunity for some of you to, to pitch in. So I have designed surveys before, but it's not my forte. I was a social science undergraduate, social science major, but I skipped the course of statistics. Never, never had the major to graduate and, you know, couldn't play and catch up ever since. So, um, anyway, uh, as we've discussed tonight, I think we're talking about two different surveys. And it might be helpful if one of, one or more of you would like team up to, to take that on, just sort of like start to draft those questions out and then bring them back to me or to us. And I'm happy to kind of work with you on that. You know, I, I have used, uh, online survey tools. What Survey Monkey is probably one that a lot of you have encountered in your work and in personal lives. And it's, it's, once you know what questions you want to ask and what kind of questions are they are, like multiple choice or rank, rank, ranking, different options, et cetera, it's not hard to set it up online. And, uh, you know, we might have to pay for a subscription just for a month or two in order to have it be available in a way that we want it. But if, if one of you, one or two of you were willing to, to tackle, let's figure out what the questions are, how to ask them in a way that doesn't put people back on their heels from the get-go. You know, I'd really appreciate that. And if you have any questions.
Do we have people's emails? I mean, that's.
People's emails, did you say?
Yeah.
Yeah.
To give, to give the survey.
I think the lister has. Well, we have their people's addresses.
We have their addresses. I was thinking more because an online survey you want, I think you just give people a link that they can click on and get right into the survey. And I think Front Porch Forum provides an excellent tool to put the word out. So, you know, once we have the survey ready to go and, and be, and launched, you know, we can announce it on Front Porch Forum and then we can backstop it with a page, a dedicated page on the town website to refer people to.
There you go.
And, and that will, I think, attract a lot of participation. It won't necessarily reach everybody, but my guess, from what I've heard, seen in other places, that the penetration of Front Porch Forum, the participation rate in town is probably upwards of ninety percent. So you don't necessarily catch everybody, but if you catch ninety percent of folks and you repeat it as necessary to, you know, get them to pay attention to it if they don't happen to read it the first time, I think the chances are pretty good that you'll get a good response. And we could have like a paper version of the survey at the Jericho Market and here at Town Hall. So anybody we can, part of the announcement can be, you know, if you don't have. So anybody we can, part of the announcement can be, you know, if you don't have online access or you prefer a lot of paper version, be the same survey. Someone would have to input the responses into the online tool. But, you know, most people will do the online if they can. It's just quicker to get there and complete it online. So any volunteers?
Yeah. I'd be happy to work on it.
So you too?
Yeah.
Sure. Cool. Okay. Awesome.
The, I know he mentioned like there's some ballpark figures in that preliminary study, but really it's like till the P E R is done.
Yeah, they don't really know. And, and you know, there's, there's that, the piece that he mentioned in passing that, you know, we would have to do our own engineering study around the lines that we wanted to run to serve whatever areas of town, the village we wanted to serve. I mean, those, that would be a fill in the blank later. So, you know, we could, we could probably, once the, the P E R gets underway, we could probably talk to the engineers and have them ballpark an estimate for us. Like between this, this amount to this amount would be the range for that type of, of work. And, and that, we can include that in the, the survey, just as background information.
Yeah. So you, so we need to come up with some questions for the survey.
Yeah.
Would be appropriate.
Right. And so I think Zach and Tabi have agreed to, to start the ball rolling. And then once we have a draft, we can kick it around and.
Yeah. And just to help us getting started, how would you concisely frame what we're trying to learn from the populace other than, are you supportive of a wastewater management, or not wastewater, but a sanitary management system? Which will obviously get a no.
Well, I mean, I think it's more like, we, we can't, you know, you might just start off with some basic facts like it's, it's simply difficult or impossible to make the numbers work for missing middle and affordable housing in, in the town of Underhill without having a community wastewater system. So, you know, given the dire need for more housing units to be built to accommodate working families, to accommodate elders. You know, would you be supportive of adding this capacity, knowing that the town's going to have to bond for some share of the cost and that, you know, we could provide some kind of range of prices that will depend on decisions that are often in the future. In terms of how much of the town would actually have to shoulder of that cost.
You know, the fact is forty-four units, that's a number basically. So that's something.
Yeah, some combination of serving, serving existing units, serving existing homes that are now on individual lots septic and then adding additional units through, probably mostly through infill development. Because as, as Tabe said before, you know, we're talking about, there's not a lot of lots that have capacity to add much beyond assembly to you. But there are some that, you know, if, if we make certain decisions going forward, there could be some added density in the village where we said we want it. So if this is a lynchpin issue, would you support it? You know, if, if we can get more accurate information about the costs.
And some of you, it could be duplexes, which, yeah, it wouldn't be too offensive to, uh, people, I don't think. You know, the four story high rise, I doubt a butterfly, but, uh, but duplexes.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I, I've been in this meeting before where I've heard people say that they think that planned communities are ugly. Right?
Yeah.
I think, I think you said it. So. So with that in mind, assuming that there are a lot of people in Underhill feel that way, forty-four could be, could be tough. Duplexes definitely could be tough. But that, but that aside, is there an economic benefit to the rest of the population?
I think so.
I mean, there's, there's a tax argument, I assume.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest one, right? And that's, you know, that's why Jeff maybe is upstairs right now looking trying to understand whether they're going to reappraise his home to reduce taxes because if we did get this more people in like they were describing, I think, I think that's.
Right. So is the timing going to be bad too? Because everybody's getting reappraisals right now and their tax are going up. And then we're going to be like, you all want to take more?
It is a long view though. So like, if we get that capacity and then more affordable housing is built, then it's going to take time, but then, you know, all of our tax burdens will come down eventually. But that's, that's been money to make money.
But really the timing on this is like three to five years out.
I think since at least three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ten.
That's what I know too.
Or maybe not ten, but it's, it's, uh, yeah.
I think it could be within three years and, and, you know, the state hasn't even written the rules yet for this new CHIPS program. So that's going to be in process in the next several months. I'm guessing that they'll be ready to roll that up by January. And that could make a huge difference in the cost. I mean, if it ends up being that Jericho covers ninety percent of the local cost, Underhill covers ten percent. And then that half of that cost gets covered by grants and through this CHIPS program, that, that makes it very affordable to add that capacity.
Yeah.
And, you know, by the way, it's not just homes, adding additional homes, it's also smoothing the way for businesses to grow. Because right now we have very few businesses in the village center and I, I would bet my bottom dollar that a lot of them, you know, feel like they, they can't grow much because they can't afford to build additional septic capacity on their lots. But if you say, well, wait a minute, what if the town provided this hookup, you know, would you be able to, to grow right here in Underhill as opposed to relocating to Roast and or Richmond? And, you know, probably our business owners would say, well, yeah, actually, I'd rather stay in Underhill and grow it, grow it right here. And then that's more jobs for local residents and then improves the tax base as well.
So are there any, are there any other, aside from developing the property across from the middle school, are there any other like commercial projects that are on the Underhill side that would be affected that we could, you know?
Well, we get somebody.
Use in there, some, you know, some additional economic benefit measure other than your tax base will eventually go down.
It would get somebody who owned a house, the authority to turn it into a commercial property, right?
They would do that.
And, uh, you know, and yeah, I, I guess it's, but there's nothing really, there, there's no land in, in the Underhill flats that can be developed into some, something big unless somebody tore some, tore some places down, you know, I mean, that's, and that's what happens sometimes. I think is my interpretation.
All right. So Zach and Tabe, do you want to work on draft, draft questions for the two surveys and then circulate that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. That'd be something you could do by our first August meeting, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we can email that. Yeah.
I've got chat G P T all day now. We would get it done.
But yeah, the, the preliminary step, I'm not going to be able to read through that, but if it's, if it's something easily shareable that like we can try to pull any details, but I worry about how you know, how smart it is to include those if they're not, you know, very.
Yeah, I think at this point, I think it's.
Maybe they keep without.
Yeah, yeah. Not, not get too way down in, in the specifics, just because, I mean, as Chris pointed out, there's no executive summary of that three hundred plus page report. And, and so, you know, it's, it's a lot of it is sort of technical engineering language. And, you know, there might be some, you know, a chart or a table here or there that could be copied and pasted into a fact sheet. In general, I think it's, it's, it's still early enough that we're not going to be able to say much in the way of specifics. But I think it's really more just like, you know, I mean, maybe one way to think of the broader survey for all the residents would be, you know, if, if the, if this only added twenty-five dollars a year to your tax bill, we, you know, do you think that that would be a good investment for this town?
We probably don't even need to touch on the dollars of it, really.
Yeah, I don't think you'd write it.
We, we can just, we can just go, you know, what do you, do you, do you see that there could be anything on the benefit here? Do you agree that there's housing issues? Right? We have to build, we have to build a septic system. What do you think? We could even, we could also ask Chris to share copies of their surveys.
Yes.
And that would be like a really great starting point. It might even be the starting point.
But you know, we, um, the cost is the thing that's going to hit people right away.
Yeah. So let's just like, leave that in the background.
You have to say something because if you don't say something, you'll say, you know, the cost is no, no, sort of a thing would be a response right away.
I know. Well, if there's any cost.
The cost is limited basically. And a lot of state funding can take care of a good deal of it, maybe all of it. So I think that should be included.
It's important to, to stay right up front that the state grants, the CHIPS program.
Just leveraging these programs.
Okay. So we have a starting point.
Yeah. Yeah. We're here. Well, we ate up some of the short term rental talk, huh?
Yeah.
That's a good one.
That's right.
That'll be going.
Yeah. So I'm not going to talk a lot about that because I'm assuming you all read it and you might have some thoughts or questions about it.
I have one question.
Yes.
When you, if we were to implement a local sales tax, why, why do we need, couldn't we just have this, the, uh, piggyback with the state's rooms and meals tax?
That's essentially what it is.
But, but I mean, what you were talking about, uh, having somebody identify the properties as rabidus or whatever it was. Why do we need to do that if all we need to do is say, tell Airbnb and B R B O that we want to add this tax for any rentals in Underhill?
There's a whole bunch of regulations that goes along with this thing. I mean, reading through your, your, what you meant to say, it just looks like it's just setting up a whole lot of regulations and administrative details and so on. And we don't really have a lot of extra help in this town and a lot of it is.
Vermont Public just did a story on this yesterday, actually. Lendinberry, they're having similar issues and they're kind of setting the precedent on how we move forward based on all of the litigation happening in Burlington. So, I mean, they're saying that towns in Vermont actually need to do what we're talking about right now. Because for all the reasons that we've talked about, shorting, housing shortages, all of those things, as well as people aren't necessarily being taken advantage of, but to some degree there's, you know, we're, we're not making the big bucks off of these rentals for a long-term, short-term, whatever it might be. But there's an opportunity here and we're kind of missing out on it if we don't do something about it. We don't have a lot of rentals. I mean, clearly based on what you said, but it, it, that's just what we know about. The rentals that we know about in this area. So, um, are there others? Possibly. I think your biggest concern was who enforces this? How is this enforced? And I think those are the big questions that they're encountering now just.
Enforces what? The, the building code issue you were talking about or the tax regulation?
That's clearly, so there's sort of three different levels of enforcement. One is who makes sure that, um, short-term rental units are safe for the people staying?
Right.
And, and that's clearly the state's ballpark, the state's domain. Um, because, uh, under state's law, any rental housing unit is, um, under the authority of the State Division of Fire Safety. It has to follow specific code requirements for rental property. And we don't have to get involved in that because the state's taking care of it now. So the fact that we don't have building code enforcement, we don't have a building code for rental units doesn't matter because the state's got it covered. Second level is, um, the question of, um, you know, is it causing a problem with, with impacts on neighbors? And as I said, we don't really hear much reports of problems. You know, there, there are probably things that I haven't heard because I've only been here for a few months. But, you know, it, it, right now, the town does have the authority to, uh, enforce noise violations, for example, or parking or their violations, things of that nature. Um, but we haven't really used it as far as I can tell. And then the third layer of regulation is how do we even know what short-term rentals are out there?
Yeah.
And that's the answer to the question of why would we bother hiring a firm like Granicus to, to keep tabs on that? And that's because we don't have the capacity to do it by ourselves. And they do it all, they're, they're essentially like a data mining firm. So they scrub or scour all of these sites that offer properties for rent on a short-term rental basis. So it's, it's Airbnb, it's Verbo, it's Expedia, there, there's others. And, and we don't have to think about that if we contract with a firm like that to monitor it for us because they're looking every single day. And when some new short, what, some new property gets taken off the, the long-term rental housing market and gets converted to short-term rental on one of these platforms, they will instantly see that listing. And part of their service is that they, um, do outreach on the town's behalf to that property owner and say, hey, the town has a registration requirement. And frankly, that's how you pay the registration fees from the select board adopting an ordinance that requires them to register with the town. Is how you pay for that service, the Granicus data monitoring service. So I think, you know, basically, long story short, that there's no cost to the town of that. But what it does provide for us is real-time updates about how extensive is, are these, the prevalence of SPRs in Underhill because the number I gave you, thirty-eight, is, is, you know, really just a snapshot from, um, from Air D N A, which is one of the monitoring services. Um, but it may not be fully up to date. And somebody actually did a look around, I think it was two or three years ago, and they found about half that many. So if you just compare fifteen that came up in the survey from three years ago to thirty-eight now, I mean, we could be seeing, you know, completely under the radar, but we could be seeing significant growth and in, in the number of short-term rental units in Underhill. So we don't know without having a registration and monitoring regime in place. And it, it might be, to circle back to your initial point, that, um, once we know how many there are, we might decide it's more trouble than it's worth. But meanwhile, we still could tax, um, we could have the required registration fee by select board adopting ordinance to that effect. And we could have a local option tax that brings back some of that revenue into the town's coffers. And, you know, and I mentioned, I think earlier that in Burlington, they impose a nine percent additional tax on all Airbnb rentals in town. So the state automatically collects nine percent rooms and meals tax on each rental of each short-term rental property of Burlington. And then the city tax on an additional nine percent. And they're rolling all of that revenue into an affordable housing trust fund. So it, it helps to underwrite the cost between what it really costs to build affordable housing and what, you know, affordable housing developers will, are willing to invest in.
So a couple of simple things, basically. One is just getting a registration set up. And the next step is, um, this connecting with this Granicus, is it?
We're right to have them start the monitoring.
And there's not a whole lot of involvement that the town has to get totally.
No, it's really, the, the initial level of Granicus involvement would just be to notify the new short-term rental property owner that, hey, the town has this registration requirement. And, and here's, here's the form to fill out. They actually give them the form and the cover letter. And they say, you know, here's who you send it to once you filled it out. And, and then, um, you know, there's a fee associated with that, of course.
But couldn't this, couldn't it, couldn't it, uh, state provide us the information on the rooms and meals tax that they collect from Airbnb in each town? They give us, tell us who they collected it from?
They could do that.
But they don't do that?
But they won't do that.
They won't do that. And, and, well, it's, yeah. I, I don't think, I think Ken's right. I don't think they would. But more to the point, the state struck this agreement with Airbnb company a few years ago when, when they were, this legislature was considering much more stringent regulation. And so, um, the company agreed to automatically deduct and remit to the state the rooms and meals tax for all the Airbnb properties. But even though Airbnb is the biggest platform, it's not the only platform.
Right.
And none of the other platforms are, have this arrangement with the state of Vermont.
So they, on the other platforms, you don't pay the rooms and meals tax?
Probably not.
Wow. That's kind of, you know, to give.
Yeah. And for whatever reason, the state chose not to enforce or go after these other companies.
That's a huge amount of revenue, wouldn't you think?
Yeah.
Would they be under the Granicus or registered there?
Granic, Granicus would cover all the platforms.
Yeah. So they'd achieve, uh, yeah. Scotland.
Yeah. And, and it is, I mean, it will be voluntary. You know, the, the registration, the follow-up would be voluntary. So if Granicus contacted the, the property owner and said, here's a requirement, here's the form, here's who, who the fee, what the fee is and who you have to send it to. So if Granicus contacted the, the property owner and said, here's a requirement, here's the form, here's who, who the fee, what the fee is and who you have to send it to. And if the property owner just refused, or this happens sometimes, the property owner gets this notice and they say, oh, I'll just take the listing down and then re, re-mount it again on the same or different platform and I'll be, that's, I'll just be rid of them. Well, you know, of course, if Granicus is doing their job, they'll catch it as soon as it comes back up on, on this other platform with a different name because it's the same press, right?
But Granicus connects with the town, doesn't it?
Granicus connects with the town.
So the town knows what's going on.
Right, so, so we'll, we'll have real-time information showing all locations, all the different units that are registered. We'll, we'll have real-time information about what they're charging their customers and what, what their tax they're paying, if any. And then if we then take the next step of pursuing local option, then we, we now get to keep up to seventy-five percent of whatever percentage we elected to charge additionally to the state rooms and meals tax on these units. Because the legislature just upgraded that and they removed the requirement for a town-wide vote to enact local option tax. So, um, it's just actually a good time to be talking about this because of the regulatory climate, the legal climate just improved in the town's favor if we elected to do that. You know, not to say that.
And the town administers. The town administers the local option tax.
Yes.
And, or the state collects it.
I think actually the state collects it.
Seventy-five percent to the town or something like that.
That's more than, yes. So, so there's no local involvement, other than to collect the, the fees as they come in.
Uh-huh. I'm a little annoyed that VRBO isn't paying their nine percent. That's like millions of dollars, wouldn't you think?
Well, it could, it could be six figures for the whole town. And, and if, you know, what if there's seventy-five or, or a hundred, um, short-term rental units in, in Underhill?
Yeah.
You know, we just don't know.
But I'm talking about statewide.
Oh, statewide.
They're not collecting tax, rooms and meals tax on rentals?
A lot of them, yeah.
That's just, I guess they have to go to the court to, to make that happen, right? I mean, that seems like something fundamentally wrong with that.
Yeah, I think Airbnb wants, consented to this, um, agreement because they saw that on the, the looming on the horizon was a possibility that they might end up like having suddenly finding a lot of their rentals in Vermont to be uneconomical in, in the face of greater regulation. But I, 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 I hear you. I feel like, you know, why didn't the state go after these other STR platforms? Because there's definitely some lost revenue there and statewide level, it's going to be significant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that might be something to talk to, um, their legislature about.
Yeah, right.
Let them know that we're aware this is happening.
They got bigger fish in front.
They do, but, you know, it's.
Tax bigger.
I had a question just as.
It's what?
They get the money from us. Final language, do we, how many short-term rentals need to use or not?
We, we don't address it.
Yeah, so I guess that's, that's a big, big question. I guess to me, the bottom line is like, do we want short-term rentals? If we do, how, how much do we want? Do we, we want to restrict the, the number of, 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 uh, short-term rentals in the town? As opposed to just, that's a separate issue from the, from regulating and taxing.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, in the report, you saw that, you know, different, I made a chart with the different towns and different regulatory approaches. And some towns have taken, you know, somewhat absolutist stance. I mean, I think that Woodstock basically had a moratorium on new short-term rentals. That was a kind of an absolutist stance and whether they could make that hold up over time is an open question. And then Morrisville, I don't think anyone's challenged Morrisville's regulation yet, but Morrisville said, and this is like Burlington, that, um, you, you can operate an Airbnb, but you have to be on the property at least part of the year. So that's, I mean, that's, to a lot of the Airbnb operators in Burlington who sued the city on the legality of that regulation, that was a big issue. Because they, they owned several properties scattered throughout the city. It's like all of a sudden, tell me I have to sell these and, uh, because I can't live on all five, you know, whatever Airbnb's.
Right.
Can I ask a question about that? What's the, this is probably really nuanced, but for instance, I follow a woman who lives in Vermont and she lives in Boston. She comes here on, you know, like a week at a time in the summertime during the month. She doesn't live on the property, but she lives in the property part of the year is what she says. How do you, how do you mitigate that?
Well, in Morrisville's case, their answer was you could be a snowbird.
Yeah.
You know, so, so you could be on the property from like May through October, um, and then you could fly away.
I see, okay.
And then you could rent it out during the cold weather months, you know, so smugglers not visiting or whatever.
We're sort of looking at the possibility of some wealthy person paraffuding into town and buying up ten or twenty units.
What I'm getting at.
Yeah, right.
And, and that is a big problem. It's not just. I mean, there's a lot of the rental market nationwide is being distorted by out-of-state investors who, who see it as strictly a commodity. You know, and they're only looking at bottom line, like, this is what it's going to cost me, this is my monthly mortgage insurance and, and property taxes. And this is what the, the potential gain is if I play my cards right and get good rentals from this short-term.
So that's why you have to have the owner occupied mix. But.
It helps to mitigate that, you know?
Yeah, but with the, uh, with the, uh, with the accessory units, you're, you're not required to be owner occupied. It seems like.
Yeah, but there's owner occupation of.
Just the main house, they can still, they can still do short-term rental of the, of the DRB.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, the owner has to occupy one of the two.
Right. But it seems like there's, there would be an incentive to make that into a short-term rental, just economically isn't, just for a regular rental, it's hard to make a return on it. So if the, if the state's goal is to, to ease affordability prices, the, the end result is hopefully part of, part of that is having the ADUs and they all go to short-term rentals. It seems like we want to try to steer some way.
But that's a hard nut to crack.
Yeah, I mean, I think whatever we, we recommend, I feel like it, it should originate with this body. If, if we're going to, for example, say to the select board, we've looked at this issue, we've looked at the research, what we know about the prevalence of this in, in Underhill right now. And it's our recommendation that the select board, the first step would be for the select board to adopt a registration ordinance. And here's why we think that makes sense. And here's the potential upside and here's the potential downside, just be honest about it. And, and then, you know, if the ball's in their court.
What's the downside?
Well, the downside might be, um, this, this work required to get a new ordinance across the finish line. It might be that people who are owning and operating short-term rental units in town will come out of the woodwork when they see this is on the select board agenda and talk about, come up to the meeting, select board meetings, talk about all the reasons why. They think it's a bad idea for this town of Underhill to get into this, this arena.
You bring up a good point, and that was also brought up in the story that, you know, all of those B and B owners got their signatures and they came to the meeting. But what happened is the town showed up, you know, more than the Airbnb owners. And they were like, no, we, we stand strong on what we're saying. So, I, I mean, yes, it goes both ways, but I think that there are more benefits to it than there are.
To the registration, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it starts going in the direction of, uh, of people that have them objecting to it, you know, that may create a little bit of a rise of.
Yes.
Say, well, no, we, we should have this registration.
Exactly.
Yeah, and you can probably find a lot of people in town who have adult children who would like to move closer to their parents in Underhill or other relatives who can't afford to, to rent or buy here because there's no units available. And you have them be, join the conversation and say, here's what we know about the cost of rentals right now in Underhill. And that's three hundred dollars a month more than my budget allows or whatever. The other thing is that, um, you know, you can certainly make an argument like that. You, you can say that, uh, also that we want to, we want to do what we can to stop, um, out-of-state property owners and investors from buying up and flipping properties in Underhill because we don't know how much of an issue this is. But we know that it's happened in many other communities and that that has restricted and, and ratcheted up the cost of housing for everyone else when this happens. And I, I think that would be a popular theme. It must get out into the community, that nobody wants to see the town get all, a lot of rental properties vacuumed up and flipped into short-term rentals, it's nobody's interest.
So should we have a resolution to the select board that we would like to have, uh, short-term rental for rentals registered?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, and then secondly, the, um, connection to Granicus. Those are two things, basically.
It's the same, it's basically the same process.
Are you going to enforce registry?
Well, I think Granicus does a pretty good job from what I've seen of pestering people. Like, you know, they, they will send a demand letter on town under the letterhead, um, which we get to write and we say, you know, okay, here's, here's the requirement, here's the consequences for not complying. Most people, when they get a letter like that, will say, oh, okay, never, you know, we'll do it.
The town gets the information.
Yeah. Yes.
So the town will get the information, is what Granicus said. So the town will get it and say, well, at least ten are not registered.
And it's a significant revenue stream for the town.
If we get that far.
If we get that far.
I was trying to find, maybe Duck was in here, I'm sorry if I missed it, but the, it's like a subscription, like we have. Do you know what that cost would be to the town? And then we can say, here's what it's going to cost, but here's, you know, potentially how much revenue.
Yeah, it's, it, the cost is knowable, it's variable depending on how much service you want them to provide. So like, the first step is just the data mining to establish the, the parameters of how many they are and what the addresses are, where the owners are. And what the revenues are that the owners are making on them. And, and then there's the initial outreach to, we talked about already. But they can, they can also do enforcement letters, um, they can, uh, send tax notices on behalf of the town if, if someone's not paying the taxes. So it depends on what level of service you buy, what the cost is to the town. And, you know, it's, it's, we won't know until we, we get there. But if we set the registration fee per unit high enough, like I'm just throwing out a number, three hundred fifty dollars a year or something like that. I think Burlington charges like two hundred forty now per unit. Then it, it will cover most or all of that cost. And then we can fine-tune exactly what services we want to buy and then get a, a firm quote from the company about what, what they would charge to do what we want them to do.
And that doesn't even include the one percent.
Right, the local option, rather taxed on these are all.
So if, if, uh, like VRBO is not paying a state, uh, the state rooms and meals tax, but we use this Granicus.
Yeah.
And they identify some, a VRB owner that has rented in town, we can apply our own, we can tell them to, they owe a certain amount of money?
I believe so.
Okay.
Is it not included in like the state tax code? That if you have a rental property, you owe, you know, like you owe X number of dollars at the end of the year? I mean, this just sounds like.
Yeah, well, you know, the legislature actually proposed that. They proposed that every, um, owner of a rental unit, any type of rental, I would say, be assessed an annual fee because they, they tasked, they added that responsibility to the State Division of Fire Safety to do all code enforcement for rental properties. Previously, towns like Burlington and South Burlington did their own code enforcement for rental properties. But the legislature said, no, no, it's not really working well, so we're just going to make the State Division of Fire Safety responsible for all of it. And when that question came up, like, should we charge landowners a fixed annual fee to cover the state's increased costs? Because we have to hire more staff, more inspectors to go out and, and look at all these rental units, thousands of them state-run. They, they balked, the legislature balked and decided not to create an annual.
Yeah, but the, the nine percent, what are you calling it, room and board?
Rooms and meals tax.
Yeah, like, can't they just do it through the, through the annual tax program as well? How much, how much revenue did you make on rentals this year?
Short-term.
How much tax did you pay on short-term rentals this year?
Yeah.
Wouldn't you?
You think the data would be available, right?
Well, yeah, and then, and then it's fraud if they are reporting information, right?
It's like not paying sales tax when you have to, not filing the monthly sales tax payment.
Yes.
It's, uh.
But maybe, I'm just, we need to do some more refining before we're going to put this to the select board or?
Yeah, I think so.
I think so.
I'm just wondering, are we, are we trying?
Yeah, we're just doing the.
We're just asking for the registration of, set that out, we'll see what we get.
I'm all, I'm, I'm supportive of doing that now if you, if we can, if that feels appropriate.
So we all think that there would be support to get folks to start paying, uh, Underhill town fee or tax? Let's tell these properties, somewhere down the road.
The select board is to work hours and every time it's like something else for Brad holding his plate, it's like up the brakes kind of thing.
Registration feels like an easy win.
It should be, but just to monitor and get knowledge of what's out there.
It does feel important to know what's, what's going out there, like, how many there actually are in Underhill. Because once you know how many there are at a point in time, you can also track growth over time. And, and that's important too, from a policy perspective, the select board to know. You know, if, if we're losing whatever small amount of rental, long-term rental housing stock we have to short-term rentals that are, you know, ballooning, we, right now, we don't know that, we don't have a way of tracking them. So with registrations, we would track that. And if it started growing rapidly, then that would be good information for the whole town to have, the select board in particular, to know, you know, how much do we want to influence this growth, how much do we want to restrict this growth, if at all?
All right, so I want to get this to the select board, right? So can you bring that to the select board?
I, I think your idea of a motion, for the motion to do that.
Yeah, okay, so a, a motion to the select board to, um, move ahead with, um, registration of, are we just going to hit to short-term rentals or also, or just rentals?
I think short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals. And also in connection with the information, um, agency or whatever it is, Granicus.
Yes.
Which will help to keep the information or bring the information to us. Okay, so is anybody in favor of this? Second, yes. All of us in favor of this motion?
Hi.
Hi.
No?
No. No, because I think it's an enforcement measure and I think we need to be thinking, I think we need to be thinking about what are we trying to do versus just like coming up with additional costs without a plan. I feel like even if it's not an issue, we should be thinking about, we should be thinking about the additional tax. Because I feel like that's kind of a no-brainer. Whether, you know, it's big now, we know that it's going to be growing. And we're talking about ADUs and it makes sense just to have the policy in place and ready to rock.
There we have one negative.
Six to one.
Yep.
Great. So we have two things left, just the approval of the minutes from last meeting and then the term. Anybody have any corrections to the minutes?
Nope.
Um, all of us in favor of the minutes?
Second?
Sorry, who seconded it?
Tim.
Tim, Jen.
Oh, we've never got Jeff called here, huh?
One more motion.
Okay.
Red in the face.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And second.
Yes.
Great. Second, okay. Did you make the motion to adjourn?
We did.
Oh, Bart did.
I seconded it.
Thank you.
Yeah.